Call the meeting to order. It's a very lively, rowdy crowd. That's fun. But you please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Ginny, would you please take the role? Collins?
Here.
Foyle?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Owen? Here. Okay, we have a number of guests, and I hope you won't mind, we're going to go ahead and do our 207's best to start. So let's start with Ben Towns at Maine South.
We are pleased this evening to celebrate Morgan Timmons as Maine South's representative. So Morgan has always wanted to go into healthcare. Originally, she was in competitive dance and acrobatics and had surgery on her left shoulder a few times, and she said that made her learn what it meant to be a patient and the care that all the nurses showed towards her. So fast forward to today, because she was in the environment so often, she's had many positive interactions that's piqued her interest in the field. And currently, she's at Lutheran General Hospital volunteering on the dialysis floor and the mother-baby floor. She mainly stock supplies, discharges patients, assists NCTs with various tasks, and sometimes readies rooms for patients. She's also in the search program where she observes different elements of the hospital setting and rotates through the jobs. When I was talking to her, I said, "Well, what's your favorite so far?" And she said, "Rheumatic surgery," which is awesome. Her junior year, she worked at Beyond the Bell, a carpenter elementary school. This is an after-school program through the Park District. In the program, she organizes games, plays crafts, and watches kids until they are picked up from school. Morgan's also a member of HOSA, the Medical Careers Club, and Hawk Pride. She is taking the CNA class at Maine South, and in her clinical, she enjoys doing things with patients and their reward that comes from it. She was telling me about the satisfaction that's derived from the experience and said, and I quote, "It's not glamorous work, but even talking to patients can make all the difference." All right, so some things that your amazing teachers were glad to put towards you, Morgan. So her internship coordinator, Katie Schroeder, said that Morgan Timmons exhibits kindness and strong work ethic in all that she does. Morgan has such a welcoming personality and willingness to learn that allows her to have a huge impact on the people she interacts with. Her pursuit to learn about herself as a young professional has been tireless. She has worked as an intern with students at local grammar schools, and she has taken on various roles at Lutheran General Hospital. She has received raving reviews from all who interact with her. People who work with her know they can rely on her and trust her. I wish Morgan all the best as she navigates whatever she chooses in the future. She has built such a strong foundation and reputation for herself, I know she will do great things. George Passos, who is the volunteer coordinator at Lutheran General Hospital, says, "I feel truly blessed that I have been a part of Morgan's journey, and it has been so rewarding to know her and work with her this past year. She is a very special young lady. I find her pursuit of becoming a nurse and helping others very inspirational. Morgan is compassionate about helping others and open to any opportunity at our hospital that would allow her to grow, learn, and especially be able to give back to others. Morgan's warm personality, willingness to volunteer and help anywhere in the hospital, and her passion to learn and experience as much as possible is what makes her stand out. This is just the beginning for Morgan Timmons, as I know she will touch many lives and have a huge impact in providing care, love, and compassion to those in need. Morgan is very driven, hardworking, and passionate about helping others. Advocate Lutheran General Hospital, very fortunate and grateful to have a dedicated and committed volunteer like Morgan and a true leader." Her math three teacher and Hawk Pride sponsor, Elizabeth Ball, who's actually here with us this evening supporting Morgan, says, "Morgan is a bright, tenacious, hardworking young person. She readily accepts new challenges and exceeds all expectations. Morgan always came to class, fully prepared to participate and learn. Whenever she struggled with a concept, she would come to office hours to clear up any confusion. Morgan truly advocates for her own learning. The math three class was taught in a cooperative learning setting, and Morgan was the ideal partner. Morgan is a serious student who fills the obligations of her roles. She is equally comfortable leading a problem as well as following someone else's suggestion. Morgan is a natural encourager. Frequently, I would hear her tell a peer, 'You've got this.' She is exceptionally kind, young lady, who is tremendously respected by the faculty and her peers. Morgan is respected by her peers as someone who gets the job done both inside and outside the classroom. Morgan understands that life is not only about classroom achievement, but also about improving the quality of life for those around her. Morgan is in her second year as a Hawk Pride leader. As a sponsor of the program, I have had the opportunity to witness Morgan's leadership in the small group setting. Morgan makes students feel comfortable immediately. Her kind, gentle nature encourages people to engage. Morgan is purposeful in her meetings, and students come away from each meeting understanding what they should have learned." And finally, Heather Sennett, Morgan's healthcare careers and medical terminology teacher, says, "Morgan has always come to healthcare careers and medical terminology with a cheerful attitude. She has also been a positive addition to the HOSA Future Health Professionals over the past two years. By taking the appropriate classes, Morgan has been very purposeful in preparing for her future. She will have a successful career in the healthcare field." And Morgan, we were talking about the need for great nurses in our hospitals to take care of us, and you want to tell us what your plans are for the future?
Yeah, so I'll be going to college for nursing and a direct admin program. I saw options, but I still haven't chosen yet, and my goal is to become either a NICU or pediatric nurse and eventually a nurse practitioner.
And who's here with you tonight?
My mom and my dad are, and my boyfriend and his mom.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to Maine East. Hi, Sophia, you want to come on?
Maine East is pleased to recognize Sophia Milovanovic as one of 207's best in the area of career exploration. Sophia may be a familiar face, as she was recently featured in a My Plan My Story video. It's a joy to celebrate Sophia tonight as she's a prime example of our district's aspiration to truly get it right for every student. Truthfully, Sophia has done an awful lot on her own to get it right. Like so many of our successful students, Sophia has a resume overflowing with activities and a transcript that proves she can do it all. What sets Sophia apart is her drive. She has a distinct awareness of how she is in control of her journey and how she intends for her hard work to pay off. In her junior year, Sophia expressed interest in an internship at a law firm. She has always loved her English courses and excels at developing a strong argument. Sophia credits her current composition class for refining her persuasive writing skills. She shared that she was grateful that she was quickly placed at a civil law firm in Displanes. She works with attorney Yearwood, who has 35 years of experience in the field, and was a little hesitant to take on an intern because she didn't want to have to constantly supervise a teenager. Attorney Yearwood quickly realized that Sophia was driven, professional, and quick to learn all new tasks. Sophia's work has been such an asset to Yearwood and Associates that she was asked to take on a paid internship for the summer, and that work was extended into this school year. What was intended to be an exploratory experience has turned into a job, one that is providing Sophia with outstanding experience for her future career. It's important to note that Sophia didn't just get lucky in finding an opportunity that she loved. She took advantage of many club and course opportunities throughout high school to determine that practicing law is the right fit for her. Sophia is a member of the National Honor Society, a participant in Cross Country Entracked, the president of Feminist Club, and a member of the Chicago Bar Association Law and Debate Club. Prior to Sophia finding her fit in her law internship, she was actually exploring healthcare, hence her role as a club officer for our Future Health Professionals Club. Her great written and oral persuasive presentations on adolescent health-related topics allowed her to compete at the state-level HOSA competition in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Naturally, Sophia's relentless pursuit of knowledge and diverse experiences is appreciated by her teachers as well. Ms. Letham, Sophia's English teacher, shared that her drive is evident daily. Her persistence for feedback and self-improvement serves as a model for her classmates. Sophia embraces self-improvement, and she seeks experiences that challenge her so that she can learn and grow. Mrs. Love has gotten to see Sophia's stellar academic skills in addition to her passion for challenging activities. She shared that, "I've been fortunate to get to know Sophia over the past four years as both a student in class and a leader in two of the clubs that I sponsor. She's bright, kind, and demonstrates leadership qualities in every interaction with peers and staff. Sophia's maturity level, drive, and self-motivation has always been above and beyond that of her peers. She's always willing to put in extra time and effort to make sure that whatever she's presenting showcases her best abilities." Mr. Peters was excited to share his experience with Sophia. She's an awesome student who has a real passion for social sciences. She's taken a number of classes in the field, including AP Government this year. It's been a pleasure seeing Sophia thrive in both the classroom and her internship experience. Our career coordinator, Ms. Fraser, shared that she's witnessed this young lady develop both academically and personally into a mature, bright, and confident individual, ready in every way for college. Sophia is bright, energetic, compassionate, and genuinely well-rounded. She started her internship last fall, where she skyrocketed. She's been trusted to work independently and has been described as being really sharp and tremendously delightful to work with. Ms. Block, Sophia's counselor, shared that she has demonstrated that she's a fearless leader, and she's continuously impressed by her maturity and her bravery. Sophia's success speaks for itself. It's her conscientious and humble personality that will continue to pave this path for her. Sophia shared with me that it's nice that people often compliment her skills and accomplishments, but she knows how important it is to keep herself in check. Sophia said that she always wants to do more and to do better. We have no doubt, Sophia, that you'll do just that. Thanks so much for all that you've contributed to Maine East over the past four years. Sophia, who's with you tonight?
Tonight, I have my mom, my dad, and my brother.
Great, and tell us a little bit about your future plans.
So I'm planning on, for a while, I thought I wanted to do English for an undergrad major, and I've switched that over to either business marketing or business administration. I'm planning on either National Lewis or North Eastern. Those are the most affordable right now. And then, of course, law school. After those four years.
Okay, and last, but certainly not least, Maine West.
Monish, can you please come on? I am really happy to reintroduce Monish Sony to the board tonight. You might or might not remember that Monish came to our September meeting with other members of the Gay Straight Alliance to share information about the great work they've done to inaugurate our now annual Maine West Pride event. Tonight, we honor Monish for their excellence in career exploration, but actually, the two board appearances fit together very nicely. Monish wants to make a career out of community outreach and activism, partly because of the experiences and opportunities they have had at Maine West. "This is the work I want to keep doing," they told me. "If I got all these opportunities, why can't everyone else? How can we make sure everyone else gets these opportunities? The system should be accessible to everyone, not just me." Among the many lessons Monish has learned at Maine West, they have discovered that anything you find you want to do, the opportunity to explore it is here. If you make use of the systems that we have, there's no end to what you can do. And so it seems, as Monish has used their academic, extracurricular, and internship experiences to find their why. During their sophomore year, they told me, "I wanted to be six different things." They jumped around in their mind from doctor to actor to entrepreneur. Then they joined Mock Trial, which sparked a deep interest in law. They pursued an internship with Speak Displanes, a nonpartisan nonprofit that promotes youth engagement in civics. They learned about voter outreach, tuned into community discussions about policing, and threw themselves into our pride event. In Senator Laura Murphy's office, Monish began to understand constituent service and the legislative process, witnessing at a far deeper level what the craft of governance looks like as compared to politics. They know what it feels like to work across cultural backgrounds and generations to build a better community, and for this, I feel personally grateful, as I know firsthand how deeply Monish's work can impact the community. And I can't wait to see what they will do on a bigger scale. At Maine West, Monish has left their imprint on Mock Trial, DECA, The Westside Dance Company, The Westerner, Environmental Club, Gay Straight Alliance, National Honor Society, DC Demaka, which is a cultural dance group, and the principal's leadership team, probably some other things. And breaking news, in DECA this past weekend, Monish took second place in the state. Community awareness project, and you qualified the nationals, right?
I did, yeah.
Way to go, way to kill it. Monish also plans to reboot the business they started with their older sister, Cheeky Bar, and begin placing snack bars in stores again to bolster their college fund. I've heard about these bars for three years. I haven't tasted them yet, though. You will. So. You did give me a business card. They credit their parents with setting the stage for their explorations, introducing them to numerous activities, and modeling what it looks like to engage actively in the community around them. Monish has used their opportunities as a Maine West student to become a student of the world. This makes them a tremendous example for their younger schoolmates to follow, and makes our staff very proud. Guidance counselor Ms. Adams has seen Monish in action in several important projects outside the classroom. I've had the great pleasure of working with Monish with our GSA and our annual Community Pride Celebration. Their combined efforts with Speak Displanes and the Maine West GSA to help create and plan our first-ever LGBTQIA+ community event was incredible. Because of their work and collaboration, we also applied and received a $10,000 grant from the It Gets Better Project. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with Monish, and I have no doubt that they have a bright, successful future ahead of them. Mr. Elifson loved coaching Monish in golf and loves teaching them even more. I was lucky enough to get to know Monish through golf when they came out for the team as a sophomore. They were always a joy to be around. Their positive energy was infectious, and they were always willing to listen and learn. I feel even more fortunate to have Monish as a student this semester in Composition Two. I am so proud of the strong, confident, and fearless person that they have grown into. Ms. Wisdom can't speak to Monish's career explorations, but thinks they are a lovely young human. Monish is a breath of fresh air, unfailingly self-expressed, engaged, and enthusiastic. They have a genuine confidence and understanding of who they are, and they create a comfortable space for anyone to be in. Their peers respect them, and they work easily to contribute to National Honor Society events. Ms. Mazanowski values Monish's four years of contributions on DECA. They demonstrated great perseverance through the pandemic. After state and national competitions were canceled freshman year, they still joined DECA sophomore year and competed virtually at both the state and national competition. Monish continues to explore and hone their entrepreneurial skills through DECA events as an upper-class person. Not only are they a strong competitor academically, but their positive attitude and friendly demeanor enable them to make personal connections across the DECA network in the region and the state. Mr. Ruder appreciates Monish's presence on those days when you need them most. One of the best things about having Monish in class is their uncanny ability to put a smile on your face. They are great with people, and they have this way of making you think they are excited to see you. We need more people like Monish these days. It's hard to have a bad day when Monish is in the room. And finally, Ms. Hanson, who worked closely with Monish in charting out their voyage through career exploration, points to Monish as a proud example of what the program could be for our students. Monish has exuded a true passion for career exploration since day one. They've utilized classes, clubs, career tracks, and multiple internships to help solidify their pathway. Monish approaches career exploration with openness and excitement. They embody what we want all of our students to do throughout high school. Their professionalism, communication skills, and willingness to help others is beyond their ears. So thank you, Monish, for making the most of every day you've been at Maine West. You are truly one of seven's best. Monish, can you introduce who's here with you tonight?
I have my mom and dad, and I also have my internship director, and I have all my CCRC teachers within the community with me.
Awesome, and plans for next year?
Yeah, I plan to double major in legal studies and public policy. I plan to become civil justice lawyer. I also want to pursue Korean politic later on, if I can. And then, I have multiple different options right now. If I stay in Illinois, I'm probably going to go to UIS in Springfield, but I'm still looking at like different options in Boston, help for Yale.
It's really wonderful to have students who are being honored for their career exploration pursuits, particularly because we have the foundation here, members from the foundation here, who are this year in particular are raising money through their fundraiser to help our career pathways program. And I think Ken wanted to introduce someone.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Cook to introduce her team back there. Moments like this are just, for me personally, very heartwarming because it's been a journey. And Dr. Cook in particular, when we started this work almost 10 years ago, we had 74 business partners. Today, we have 800 business partners. And stories like Sophia's, where our students go out, they do internships, there's sometimes a reticence on the part of the business partners, and what ends up happening invariably is that they find out how talented, bright, committed, and what a value-add our students are. And her story of post-internship getting employment, that's an increasingly common story. So I'm just incredibly proud of the program. Dr. Cook, would you introduce your team here that helps support our students on this important mission?
Hi, everyone. First, I'd like to introduce Laura Welkins. She is manager of Business and Community Relations. And Kayla Hanson, also the manager of Business and Community Relations. And Joanna Fraser, who is career coordinator at Maine East. Randy Q's career coordinator at Maine South. And Julie. Thank you for helping us in the CCRC, the Career and College Resource Center at Maine West High School. And Tyra Nelson, who is the career coordinator at Maine West High School. And also Sarah this year, Sarah Holmes, is co-secondary counselor at Maine West.
You can imagine the complexity of growing and then managing 800 businesses and to serve, you know, 6,200 students. I don't know how they do it. We arguably in this district are blessed to have what I think is the best career team in this country, and I really do mean that. It's not too much of a statement to say that. So Laura, on behalf of our team, just thank you guys so much for what you do. And really, you see tonight with the experiences of our students what it really is all about. You know, Carla mentioned the foundation, and I'm incredibly proud of sort of the evolution of the foundation in this district and its, I think, more synchronous alignment with our mission, directly supporting our students on these career paths. That really gets at the essence of what our mission is, what we really stand for, which is truly to try to get it right for every student, something we never really get done. But when it's your child who's had these experiences and they're walking out of our schools with a really good understanding, and you, I pick up my ears and listen when someone says, "Well, I'm going to look at these schools for my English major." Good, as an English major, don't overpay for your English major, especially if you're going to law school. That's the return on investment part of our work. So I'm just really, really pleased, proud, actually, just to acknowledge the people in this room, including our guests here with the foundation, who have really leaned into this and given us the platform to have a better partnership than we've ever had. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. The foundation, we don't want you to go yet, but our students, we want to congratulate you and your parents and all the people that have supported you. This is your opportunity to leave the meeting, have a photo taken with your principal, and if you'd like to come back, you are welcome to do so, but you don't need to. Do we have any public comments that anyone's seen there? I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
Okay, then let's move along to update superintendent.
Just very quickly, I was honored to get invited to a summit last week in New York through the National Superintendent's Association. It was by invite only. We had participants from the US Department of Education, from the business community, from policymakers, and then from school leaders, and also the unions were represented. I got to meet Randy Weingarten, and she followed me on Twitter. That's a big deal if you're in the education space. It was kind of cool. She's good friends with Hillary Clinton, as a matter of fact. I think that's why she followed me, and I just told her I was superintendent of Hillary's district. But at this meeting, we talked a lot about the future of education, the next 15 years, and a lot of our discussion was around things like ChatGTP. We had a gentleman who has a robot, actually, he's developed, and we got to do some practices in real time and then discuss the implications of this and what it means for us in education. I don't know that we walked away with any answers, but just a commitment to reconvene and think about it, but it certainly has very, very direct implications on the future of how we do school, how we think. I like to believe, as a former writing teacher, that writing, reading, speaking, and listening is never going to go out of style. I hope it doesn't. I hope we don't evolve to the point where robots do that for us. However, on a late night, when my paper is due the next morning, having ChatGTP there to maybe do some editing and cleaning up for me, I could probably wrap my head around that, as long as I know that I still have the skill to write the essay. So in any event, it was just a really, really wonderful experience, and I'm so glad that I got to participate in that and hopefully share some of the things that we talked about here with our team.
Great, okay, thank you. At this point, I just want to take a moment before other board members maybe want to update us on anything, to just welcome the foundation here. I really, really, I'm glad that we were able, Susan and I were able to set this up. We want to thank you for all your service. I mean, we know that you're doing fundraiser, and Susan, in a moment, if you wouldn't mind, just talking a little bit about that for the benefit of all of us. But you've also supported so many things over the years, not the least of which is the Student-Based Health Center. In our board packet tonight, there's a scholarship that you guys are funding. Deeply grateful for all that you've been doing, so thank you very, very much. I know there's people on the board that have also served as liaison to the foundation. If they want to say anything, they're more than welcome to. And then, you know, hopefully you'll get up and give us a little. And I know that some of us are also going to be invited out to their main meeting, where they'll be able to give us a wrap-up of the year and how it went for them. Susan?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much for inviting us tonight. It's great to meet some people. I know some of you, and I met some new people tonight. You know, we're all here for the same common goal of supporting the students in this district, so I think it's a great opportunity for us to get to know one another on a more personal level and, you know, discuss what's going on. Even just tonight, I met Sheila and talked to her about how, oh, we're, you know, we're always trying to find some people from Maine West. As a, you know, as a Maine West parent, maybe you can, you know, help us try to identify some people who might either, you know, volunteer with us or sit on the board. So those kind of connections are always important. And what a special night to be here, to recognize the best of 207. I mean, I was almost tearing up hearing the stories of these amazing students. There are so many incredible stories from across the district, so thank you. I did want to just say a couple things. I don't know how familiar everyone here is with what the foundation does. First of all, we're made up of a group of volunteers, and we have current, past, and future parents of D207 students on our board. We have alums from the three schools. We have retired teachers and administrators. We have current teachers, and we have a couple past school board members as well. So we hope that we continue that diversity on our board so that we represent, you know, all the interested parties within our school district. Our programs, as Carla just mentioned, you know, the School-Based Health Center, we've been a great supporter of that. Last year, they were our featured recipient for our fundraiser, and we gave them a check for $50,000. We continue to have a core group of donors who really have a place in their heart for the School-Based Health Center. You all will be receiving another check from one of Maine East reunion years next month, and that is a core group that continues to really support the School-Based Health Center. We continue to give scholarships to students. We have done that for the peer-to-peer tutoring students, and as that program changes, we continue to evaluate, you know, if we continue to do that, but we look for the programs that we feel the foundation can continue to support through scholarships and such. We're probably best known for our grants, the teacher grants. This year's going to probably be a record year for us. So far, we've already awarded over $19,000 in grants. Next week at our meeting, we will be reviewing somewhere between $10,000 and $14,000 in grants just for that month, so this is really going to be a record month, a record year for us. And we instituted opportunity grants this year, which are specifically for individual students who are in need of some sort of financial assistance, whether that's going to a conference that they feel is important for their future career. We also supported a student who was going to be without some very significant healthcare benefits for a couple months, some mental healthcare benefits for a couple months, which would mean high school and her post-high school career. And so for whatever reason that a student might have some individual needs, and if there's a teacher out there who sees that, they come to us, and we, on a case-by-case basis, look at those. So we also have been working with Laura, the Career Pathways Program, and how the foundation can help out. And as Carla mentioned, this year, our featured recipient will be the Career Pathways Program. So we hope that our fundraising efforts this year can match what we did last year for the School-Based Health Center. And we hope that any of you who would like to join us will on Wednesday, April the 26th. I was hoping to have some formal printed invitations, but they are going to press this week, so I just printed some out of my computer, and if you all want to take one and pass it around. We're back in person this year with our fundraiser. It'll be five to seven on the 26th, and we would love to have you join us if you're able to. There's information there on how to get to our website and get some information. Thank you again for having us, and also, like Carla mentioned, you know, I hope that some of you all will join us at our end-of-year meeting in May, and we can give you sort of a wrap-up of how our year went and give you hopefully some great news on how our fundraiser ended up. If anyone has any questions, let me know, but otherwise, I just want to thank you and go over to seeing you all again.
I just want to comment. I think maybe, was it eight years ago, nine years ago, I joined you guys, I mean, I was the rep, and I'm just, I'm so proud of you, and you've done such a great job. I mean, to watch the organization grow under your leadership and with just all of the tremendous work that's gone in, I just, I'm just really, you know, I think I had a teacher once that said, hats off to you. That was a long time ago, I'm dating myself, but I'm just, I'm just so excited that, you know, to see this, and it's wonderful. So thank you for giving up your time and your energy, and it's just great to see. So thank you.
Yeah, can I echo that? I don't know if I can mash the exuberance that you're...
Oh, I think you can.
I'll do my best. But no, I think it's really neat to see where this has come. I was on the foundation, I think I started like four years ago, maybe, or something like that, and just to see how it's grown under your leadership in particular, and I think others as well that are in the audience tonight, it's just, it's amazing to see the money that you've raised, the way that you've supported a lot of the teachers that are coming up with these new innovative ideas, and through the grants, you're able to really recognize and provide opportunity to those things. And then I'm super excited with the focus for this year. Interesting to hear that it's back in person, so that's exciting as well. So great to hear, and really, kudos to you and the team, because I think it's really neat to see where this is coming.
And I do want to mention those grants, a vast majority of those grants that we are providing are for, you know, career-focused initiatives. You know, there are a lot of people, whether they're going to, you know, a conference or, I can't even remember all the different grants that we've given this year, but a lot of them are very focused on career experiences and these students really learning more about what they're interested in. And so I think that that's a great fit between, you know, what's going on in the classroom and students' futures, so we're excited about that.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Susan. That was a wonderful, I mean, that really laid it all out for us, and I'm glad we were...
I didn't want to take up too much time.
No, but I think it was great to have that all, and we can all hear that. And also, we love that you, you got cake at the meeting, so that really, I don't know if that's ever happened, but we'll be inviting you back for that.
Well, when you come to our meeting, we're going to have to figure out what to do.
I just want to say, great to see Margaret right there, as our former member.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other board members that have an update?
I actually have one. So this month, around March 15th, we're going to roll out, and speaking as a joint venture between McCaff and D-207, for fentanyl awareness. You know, 106,000 people have died from fentanyl overdoses this year, and it really is a scourge that has come, and it's touching, you know, high schools around here. Not ours yet, thank God, and I'm happy about that, and I want to believe that some of that is because of the work McCaff has done in the past here. But we're going to be doing these boards, like, you know, campaign signs, the kind, I don't know what the formal name is, that you put in the ground. Yard signs, thank you. That's going to say, fentanyl is fatal, and one pill can kill. And so it's an extension of the DEA campaign, but anybody who wants to put it out at their house, if you live in District 207, I'm happy to put those out, and then we're going to put banners on the fences, like we have at, hopefully you guys agree, I didn't ask yet, but we're going to put banners on the fences, like by the baseball fields and football fields and all that, so that when parents see it. And then I'll be putting out messages that go along with the signs, and then we'll, I'll coordinate with Brett about how we're going to, you know, maybe put it in the parent notes and stuff like that. And so that signs will say District 207 and McCaff, so don't be surprised if that's come out. And I'm really excited about it because I feel like we're doing something about it. We're also going to be sponsoring a Narcan class. I have, I'd like to, we haven't gotten all the details about it. The board is certainly welcome to attend. Any of the administrators who'd like to attend, I'll try to make it a convenient time, I'll put a survey out. But we're going to be sponsoring those around the township, I hope.
And when you say where, do you mean McCaff?
McCaff, yeah.
Not the district?
Yeah, not the district. Well, hopefully I get it all for free. That's my goal, is that, since we don't have any money anyway, so we're going to go out and, now, I get this for free mostly, and I get other people to run the class and then donate the Narcan. So, and there's, other organizations have the money to do that, so it's just a question of coordinating it.
I want to thank board member Iker, who actually brought this to my attention first this year and shared a personal story, and Carla as well. It's an example of things that are happening in our community, and, you know, gave that to the cabinet, and from there, you know, the idea was to tell Liz Terry, who obviously has leaned into it, and...
Oh, thanks for bringing it up.
We'll hopefully do some things like our many other successful campaigns we've had with McCaff over the year.
Yeah, we actually had, you might remember the Parents Who Hosts Lose the Most, that's the kind of campaign we're going to follow.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Also, just quickly, I don't think anybody else will be going, but I will be going to attending our, the annual conference for COSSBA, the NSBA, which we have changed it first time, first year, replacing NSBA on March 30 through April 4. So hopefully I could bring some lateral informational items and also books, free of charge, to all the special board members after my return, and hopefully I can make some informational announcement the day after, which will be our board meetings.
Our board meeting. Thank you. Thanks for going, Jen. It's a new organization, but they seem to have a good lineup and good speakers.
So I'm very interested, particularly because I did attend the previous NSBA, and it's really worthwhile. We have learned so much and gained so much experience, so I'm hoping to see what's the difference between NSBA and COSSBA at the same time, and, you know, glad to make that report, to share this information, and hopefully in the near future, you know, other board members could able to attend together. I don't want to be lonely.
Well, and Tom Bertram, who ran the Illinois School Association, is taking over that organization too.
Yes, okay. Good to know.
Okay. Any other board members? All right. We're going to move along then to the construction update. Mary?
In your board packet is the February construction update. Late-breaking news, unfortunately, last week, we had a meeting with the school. We had two delays. One is the moisture mitigation product that we hope to put on the bottom of the pool, on top of the concrete, which would allow the concrete cure time to go from 28 days to seven. The manufacturer told us they would not certify the product for the concrete on the pool, only on the gutters. Why? They're both submerged in water? We don't know, but that would mean that none of that concrete would be warranted. That's not a risk that we could take. So we have to have the full 28-day cure time on that. And then the pool deck, there's a ton of tile that's delaminating, and we talked about our options immediately are to, if we were to replace that tile, we'd have to go with a different tile. They make the existing tile, but it's a three-week lead time on that. So we talked about what are our options, what do we do? We could use a different tile and get that pool back online about the third week in April, and I think that the school said, you know, leave us out of the pool for the rest of the year, do the tile right, get the moisture mitigation done right, and we'll come back in during summer camp. So that's the late-breaking news. It's probably some of our first delays that we've seen from supply chain issues, which means that we're just very fortunate.
Which is impressive, by the way.
Yeah.
Terry, though, with that, is it the lot of tile that was used? Did the manufacturer do a...
So, no, they have not used a lot. They make the same tile we would, they, because of the quantity, because we're going to replace the 1,200 square feet of tile, it would be made on demand. So, but it is the identical tile, it'll look a little different because one will be new, one will be forty years old.
I guess what I'm saying, though, is that, well, if you buy the same tile, you run the risk of...
Right, it'll be a different dialogue, but at least it's a one-by-two. Our other option is to go to a two-by-two or a one-by-one, and the tile size would not match.
Can you help the manufacturer do a failure investigation so that they would know why it was happening?
Oh, it's, water gets under it. I mean, it's 50-year-old tile, so during the course of 50 years, a little bit of water has gotten under it.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the new tile.
No, 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 no. The existing deck, so we're, we would, we were patching in places, but then you could tap the existing tile, and hear that it's been delaminating over 50 years. So we're just kind of tying it all in, and we thought that doing an entire section and making that cutoff seem that transition, more minimizing that transition instead of doing patchwork here and there, would provide a much more cohesive finish to the pool.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the education committee update. Sheila?
So our education committee was held on February 17, 2023. Present at that meeting were myself and board member Iker. We called the education committee meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. There were no public comments. We started with competency-based education, including a CBE white paper. So Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Innovation, Dr. Sean Mesmer, presented a white paper on competency-based education that will be added to the website. He described that CBE is a framework for implementing a suite of best practices designed to empower students through individual choice that emphasizes the application of content, knowledge, and skills through authentic assessment. Disciplinary skills and content are designed to go deeper into essential competencies in which all students must be able to demonstrate proficiency. He further explained why the district is implementing this change and the process that the district is using to move each discipline to a competency-based framework. Next, we talked about AP and dual-credit courses, including an AP dual-credit white paper. So Dr. Sean Mesmer presented the white paper on the differences between AP and dual-credit courses, outlining the differences in rigor, cost, and benefits of each. It will be posted to the website as a resource for students and families. Next, it was the Special Education Support Plan. So Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Ms. Katie DeSanza, presented the outline for the district's Special Education Support Plan. She highlighted the reasons behind the proposed changes, namely that the district is behind the state's target for inclusion of students with IEPs. Ms. DeSanza described the plan for coserved, push-in, and consultation models of support for students and teachers in her new plan, and the timeline for implementation and program assessment. Instructional topics included standards-based grading. Dr. Mesmer explained that standards-based grading, or proficiency-based grading, is a system that evaluates students' progress towards gaining proficiency on specific learning targets called standards. These standards can be set at national, state, or school levels. A standards-based grading scale is often composed of five points ranging from zero to four rather than a 100-point grading scale. He further explained that the purpose of standards-based grading is to give a clearer picture of students' learning progress, and that SVG is an essential part of moving to a competency-based educational program. Next, well, we already talked about competency-based education. We also talked about educational philosophy of the district. So Dr. Mesmer presented information regarding the changing nature of public education and how the district's moved to competency-based education. Standards-based grading and the pursuit of the district's vision of learning are all part of the changes being made to meet the expectations for student learning in an ever-changing world. He also provided the administration's perspective on some of the topics raised and discussed at the board's recent coffee with the board session. We adjourned the meeting at 11:01.
Thank you very much. Sheila?
Just real quickly, I want to take a minute, good overview. I want to take a minute, though, specifically to thank both Sean and Katie. Katie, in particular, both of them have something in common in that they're leading in a space that's really very progressive. Sean has been just outstanding in our evolution in competency-based education. A very hard thing to do is to change in education, to change what everybody knows every time they go to school, they understand how school works, and yet, there's been plenty of literature around that there are better ways to do it, and this district is in pursuit of doing those things. So Sean has dug in for several years now and led, I think, some really, really remarkable transformations. We can point to math, but he's not done with that. And then Katie, I'm incredibly proud of her vision for including our students in regular education courses in a way that has never happened in this district, and frankly, it's long overdue. And so Katie's relatively new to this role, but I'm just pleased with, I think, the level of thought that she's brought to it and the commitment that she's brought to it, and I'm going to continue to ask her to push us to get better in service of our students. So I'm really proud of both of them.
Well-deserved.
Okay. We're going to move on to monthly status of finances. Mary?
You missed four. Oh, no.
It's okay. Monthly status of finances.
In your board packet is the January financial statements. On the revenue side, you can see, we finally got taxes, so revenue looks more in line with previous years. On the expenditure side, there's a couple of funds that we want to watch. One is the transportation fund. I had to make projection, I would say the transportation fund is going to be over budget this year. Transportation costs have greatly exceeded even what we thought they would be for this year. The other fund is the TORT fund, but we went to a January 1 renewal for all insurance lines, so you'll see that all the insurance is paid for there. So we just have some smaller expenditures to get us through the year. And then the Health Life Safety Fund, which is always kind of a guess when we budget between how much work is going to happen on our roofs in January versus July and August. So in any one year, we may be over or under, and it's simply a matter of timing. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the January financial report.
Do you have an idea on transportation, where you think it's going to end up?
I would venture to say it's probably going to be, if I had to take a guess, without spring sports even starting, $200,000 at least over budget, which is a big chunk of change. I mean, we got our white activity buses. I am hoping, hoping that that will help for the spring, but I think we're going to be over budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mary. Instructional services? Are there any?
Without spring sports even starting, $200,000 at least over budget, which is a big chunk of change. I mean, we got our white activity buses. I am hoping, hoping that that will help for the spring, but I think we're going to, we're going to be over budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mary. Instructional services? Are there any?
Report this month.
Okay, thank you. Monthly update on where requests? Ken?
Five, five this month.
Okay. We have just a notification on a first reading of board policies, one on residency and one, which I think is a very minor, update on our bullying, intimidation, and harassment policy. George, do you want to just?
Want to add to the bullying policy. Been working with ISPE. They did recommend on the second page, it's outlined on the top of the second page. However, this shall not be pursued to permit formal dispenure action solely on the basis of an anonymous report. So that should be an insufficient, according to today's packet. Second page
Second.
At the very top.
Oh, yes, I see it.
So again, that is, just worked with ISPE. The other change is the date, which is a minor full date, yep.
Okay. And then the residency, we've heard about that before.
Correct.
We bring these forward for a second reading.
Just quick question on, so there's cyberbullying and all this concerned harassment-related issues. How do we communicate with the students, or at least the parents, what our school district could do for them if there's any situation comes through, please contact this district? How do we do the communication?
Well, one way is just through our assistant principals or our administration. The other one's through the anonymous report. The other way we communicate our policy is through the website and through our online registration, through our papers that we sign off on. So they're made aware through the online registration, but there's different answers. They can report this.
Is there anything in the student handbook?
There's also the
Also student handbook.
So there will be many opportunities for students or parents when they face that situation that could do SOS.
Correct.
Request for help.
Is there any thought to ever communicating that via like the local papers, kind of like, I don't know, around enrollment time to say, you know, like what our residency policy is?
Okay, you're talking about residence?
Residency, not bullying.
Okay.
Yeah, not bullying. I'm sorry. I was thinking, sorry.
Interesting thing to put in the newspaper.
My brain was in residency. Okay, sorry.
Yes, I think, working with Brett Clark, we were talking about kind of a feature story of our, on our website. We are redoing our forms. We're providing training to our admin assistants. So I feel like we're going to be more proactive in communicating all that information.
Okay, thanks.
Just very quickly said that I think this is a very concern, concernable matter that the district need to really follow and try to provide as much assistance as possible. Recently, I've been seeing this from South Korea, high school students as well. They're seeing a lot of suicidal thing related to, due to this bullying and/or cyberbullying as well. And I don't know how much the schools are trying, but somehow, somewhere, students cannot able to receive that proper help, assistance, and then, you know, they suicide themselves. And it's been a huge issue right now in Asia per se. So hopefully, we could do a better job of such.
Okay. Could I have a motion on item, the consent agenda, items 8A through F. So moved.
Second.
Okay. I just want to mention, there is a wall of honor inductees from Maine South that was in here. And congratulations, Ben, getting that done. It's been a couple of years, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 9B, inclusive of all the items underneath there?
So moved. Okay, Mary?
Similar to what we've done for the last couple of years, we've, after trialing for a couple of years furniture and the schools narrowing their selections to those furniture they wanted, we use the various joint purchasing cooperatives to get competitive pricing on both student and teacher furniture. This is the second to last. We have one more furniture bid that we hope to award next month, and we will be finished with construction furniture.
Yay.
Yay is right.
Okay, any questions on this item? Okay, would you take the role? Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 9B, inclusive of all the items underneath there? So moved. Okay, Mary?
Similar to what we've done for the last couple of years, we've, after trialing for a couple of years furniture and the schools narrowing their selections to those furniture they wanted, we use the various joint purchasing cooperatives to get competitive pricing on both student and teacher furniture. This is the second to last. We have one more furniture bid that we hope to award next month, and we will be finished with construction furniture.
Yay.
Yay is right.
Okay, any questions on this item? Okay, would you take the role? Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 9C, new truck purchase?
Second.
District 214 bought a couple of new trucks. Then they decided to outsource their snowplowing. So they had two trucks that were available. After checking with dealerships to make sure that this was the price that they probably give us in a bid, we are recommending that we purchase them directly from 214. Helps 214 out and allows us to kind of jump that line in what is a seven or eight-month wait list to get a truck.
It's one truck, correct?
One truck.
We bought that from District 214?
Because they're outsourcing their plowing.
They're plowing and they don't need their trucks anymore, the two that they just bought.
All right. Would you take the role? Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10, intergovernmental agreement?
So moved.
Okay, that's fine.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, so this is a data sharing agreement modeled after what we have with Oakton Community College. The first to sign off on this is District 79 Penoiere. Our hope is to have one for each of our partner districts, just to streamline the process of the sharing of information between our districts. Because we are separate districts, unfortunately, there is more legality involved with the sharing of information. So this hopefully will address those barriers that we've had in the past.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, Ginny?
Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on items 11A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Patrick, we can?
Sure, this is a facility waiver for both the Junior Warriors and the Lady Warriors basketball programs. They would like to use our structure in the field house, and we would like to let them.
Okay. Any questions on that?
No questions, but can I just say that that's been so great for the community because it's made transition for those younger kids into Main West so much smoother, and they really do feel a sense of community. I hear that all the time from parents, and I feel that as a parent. So thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Nice to have that, a little bit of a parent's perspective on it. Okay, would you take the role? Lee?
Aye.
I'm doing A and B.
Oh, 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 MB, I'm sorry.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 11C?
So moved. Second.
Melissa, this is on the Adult Down Syndrome Center, the 5K Run.
Yeah, we wish to share our facilities in the spirit of inclusion with this organization.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, okay. Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 12? Resolution authorizing the vaping settlement. So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ken?
So a couple of years ago, we were approached about joining a class action suit. We did or acted to take action. This is the first part of the settlement between Jewel, and the second part will actually be your parent company. I will note, however, you can see the amount of money that we will have, no less than. When we first entered into this, it was going to be $500,000 per school. So take a zero off of that, and we're going to get about that much per school, it looks like here. But we, this is the next step of this. We have to approve this and then go back and get our name in the queue. And we will report back once we've actually got money received for this.
How many schools have participated in here?
A whole bunch. And a bunch jumped in, which is why that projected amount went down. New York in particular, a lot of schools there. I don't know the exact number, Jen.
LTR should be higher.
Should be.
I have to say, though, I'm going to comment that I think McCaff had a big part in raising the national awareness on this because we actually sponsored a spot that went to when they were trying to explain to Congress that this was not influencing teens. And so I feel very proud of that, that we had a spot in the anti-vaping.
Good job, congratulations.
Yep. Okay. Ginny?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, we will go to closed session. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Okay, any? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, we will go to closed session. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Okay, any? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 17, as appended?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 18? This is the closed session minutes semi-annual review.
So moved. Second.
This is for all?
All A through D. Okay.
A through D.
So seconded by?
Second was Dean.
Board member Patrice.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
None.
Okay. Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 21A?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Dean?
That's me.
Would you motion, yeah.
That the Board of Education is fully considered and upholds the administration's determination that student 030623-1 has not been a resident of the school district from August 15, 2022, to February 2, 2023. Accordingly, the board determines that tuition shall be charged in the amount of $13,353.88 for the period of attendance from August 15, 2022, through February 2, 2023.
Okay. There was a second. So, take the role. Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 21B?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Well, you, okay, you're supposed to move it because you're reading it.